Good evening, everyone. Time is five thirty. Order. I hope everybody had a happy new year and safe holiday season. Mister Parker, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mister Majors?
Here.
Ms. Rawls?
Present.
Mister Rodriguez?
Present.
And Ms. Bowers?
Present, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a reminder before we begin, uh, former Harrisburg City Council member David Matson officially resigned effective yesterday. That would have been Monday, January second, two thousand twenty-three. I will share vacancy information at the end of the meeting, but I just wanted to remind everyone of his resignation. We will begin our committee business this evening with the work of the Administration Committee. We have two resolutions for discussion. We will begin with Resolution seventy-eight of two thousand and twenty-two. Mister Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution seventy-eight dash twenty-twenty-two. A resolution approving the disposition of surplus vehicles which have exhausted their useful life for city operations by the Bureau of Vehicle Management.
Thank you. Good evening, Mister West. Is your microphone on? Just wanna make sure everybody can bring the gray button in the middle. Okay.
Good evening again.
Thank you.
Happy New Years to all.
Happy New Year.
This is Jessica Williams, uh, Fleet Manager for VMC.
Okay, just please speak into the microphone.
Hi, good afternoon. Good evening. This is Jessica, the Fleet Manager for VMC. Um, and I'm gonna go ahead and, um, discuss the, uh, the surplus vehicles and, uh, the possible disposal of the underutilized assets. Um, so right now that we do have a proposal in place to where, um, we have approximately, um, we have forty-five plus vehicles that are, um, underutilized or not utilized currently, um, and we would like to have an approval to, um, have a public auction to, uh, release these assets from us. So, um, because they're no longer in service, the repairs, um, exceed the value of the vehicle, um, at this point. So, um, we no longer, um, can have use for them at this point.
Okay. I will open the floor to questions, uh, from my colleagues. I will begin with Councilwoman Rawls. Do you have any questions related to Resolution seventy-eight?
Thank you, President. Um, I just had one. So, um, are you thinking you'll get a total of two thousand dollars from the vehicles or was it more? I, I'm reading the resolution, but I don't know if I'm incorrect or what.
Um, no, individually, there's a, uh, I did an approximate value for each of the vehicles that we're looking approximate va- uh, value of hopefully exceeding hundred thousand, so.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, yeah, alright. And there's about forty-five plus?
Yes, yes, correct.
The, the two thousand's a threshold where if it was less than that, we wouldn't necessarily have to go to auction with it. So.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you. I don't have any questions for you.
Thank you. Councilman Majors, any questions?
Thank you. Only, the only question I guess, um, is for the Law Bureau or for the Fleet Management in terms of the auction. Is that a city-run thing or do we use another auction service to?
I don't know if we've had that discussion for this year. We have used, I think, Penn Bid at one point. We used the CapCog at one point. I think who's ever looks like it's having the.
Yeah, we have government, gov deals is a one that we've used previously and I've already, um, been in discussions with them. So once it's like the process and everything and we're ready to launch, um, once it's approved, so we can kind of get it going, so we could use that space again. So, yep, uh, we will be using gov deals and any other public, um, uh, auction we could find besides that. So we do have a vendor.
Okay, and then the auction houses, what's their service charge in order for them to run it for?
Now, there's a, now, what they take is they, they take a fifteen percent fee. Um, however, we would, uh, we would have the public individually bid online and they would come to us. So we wouldn't actually have to do any work as far as bill on site or, or transporting vehicles. Whoever would, you know, what be the winning bidder would come to us and, you know, remove, remove everything. So, but as far as gov deal setting everything else and us using the software, um, and connecting us with the buyers and then the database, they do take a fifteen percent.
Okay.
Is, is, is that a buyer's premium where the buyer pays the fifteen percent?
I, no, that would be, that would be, yes. Well, no, that would just be the winning bid price altogether. So, and that's, you know, we'll, we'll utilize them before.
So, yeah, so that was the next question. And so that's the seller's fee is fifteen percent. So, so it's our, our property. We're gonna place an on gov deal. They're gonna charge us fifteen percent of the overall auction price. And it's not a buyer's premium. So it wouldn't be on top of whatever is sold. So say it sells for a thousand, uh, we're not, the buyer's not picking it up. The city would pick up that one fifty then. Okay. Our fifteen percent. Alright, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions? Okay, thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Yes, uh, with the revenues earned from the sales, is there any intention for that or how does that get allocated? Um, or what department does that go back into?
Technically, it's general revenue. So eventually this council would again appropriate it at some point when you're, when you're appropriating revenues.
Okay, and, um, might be a simple question, but just for the residents at home, what would qualify a vehicle for being like exhausted out of their lifetime, no longer being really able to be there?
The, the different scenarios would either be the age and the mileage of the vehicle, um, and then the cost to repair for it to be efficiently in service exceeds the value of the vehicle.
Okay.
Um, so, and there's some body damage. So there's a few different things, but individually I've, um, you know, I'm doing, I've actually looked at each particular one in detail and in person to make sure that they're all eligible. So, so we're not getting rid of anything that you know, that we would be upside down on, so.
Absolutely. So some multitude of things. Could be mileage, could be condition, could be safety. Alright, thank you. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, in Exhibit A, it looks like the majority are ages. Would that be correct, Ms. Williams?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. But it notes which ones, um, were impacted by body damage, the age and cost of repair and, or they were damaged, um, by a, a vehicle collision or wreck, it looks like. Okay, I don't have any other questions. Um, is there anything else that we may need to know regarding the, oh, one question about the timeline of all of this. So you mentioned upon approval, you'll move forward with gov deals, but what does that timeline look like in terms of the auction taking place and?
Um, no, that timeline can vary, but, um, I've discussed it with, um, uh, the vendor and, and where my goal is to have it, um, within the, within like less than two months timeframe. So I would say, I would hope, I'm hoping by March realistically, because again, we have to wait for this, but they come pretty, pretty quickly, so.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I move to add Resolution seventy-eight of two thousand twenty-two to our next legislative session agenda. Thank you. The next resolution for consideration is Resolution seventy-nine of two thousand twenty-two. Mister Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolu- Resolution seventy-nine dash twenty-twenty-two. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a temporary construction easement with Capital Region Water for the property located at fourteen hundred North Sixteenth Street for the purpose of repairing and replacing sewer pipe in the area adjacent to Seventeenth and Hur Streets.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mister Bullock.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Uh, Resolution seventy-nine is basically a standard procedure with, uh, a entity wanting to use a piece of property, in this case, city property, to stage and store some of their construction work, also in this case, dirt or some of the other construction material. CRW is working on the, uh, they call the Arsenal Boulevard Sewer Improvement Project. And, uh, it's gonna be taking place between mid twenty-three, twenty, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, this is to update the sewer in this particular area.
Okay, thank you. Just to clarify, can you repeat what you said about st- uh, storage?
It's, it's storing your, your construction material.
Okay.
Backhoes, dump trucks, in case dirt, piles of dirt, stones, uh, that is needed to use to replace inside, or even pipes to replace.
The sewer. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that portion. Thank you. Uh, I'll begin with questions from my colleagues with Councilman Rodriguez. Any questions?
Will they be stored in any kind of compartments or containers, um, Mister Percy, or how would that take place? Or just right on the street?
Majority would be stored on the property.
Okay.
They have right there. Uh, no, no containers. Um, maybe somebody, a smaller material being in containers.
Okay.
Uh, to prevent, of course, theft of that nature, yes.
No further questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
So the easement is being granted to Capital Region Water?
Correct.
And is, are there any fees or is this a courtesy easement that we give them?
There's no fee for this. It, it's just a temporary easement so they can do the construction we need them to do. So.
I think that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Majors?
No, no questions on this one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alright, and Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Uh, no, thank you. My question about the fees were, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much for being here. I move to add Resolution seventy-nine of two thousand twenty-two to our next legislative session agenda. This concludes, uh, the work of the Administration Committee this evening. The next committee we will hear from is the Budget and Finance Committee. I will defer to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. Uh, we'll be discussing Bill fourteen of twenty-twenty-two. Mister Parker, would you read it into record, please?
Yes. Bill fourteen dash twenty-twenty-two. An ordinance implementing Act fifty-seven of twenty-twenty-two. By amending the codified ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, Title Five, Licensing and Taxation, Part Five, Real Estate Taxes by adding thereto Chapter Five dash five zero one point seven, Notice and Waiver, and directing the Treasurer of the City of Harrisburg to comply with the provisions thereof.
Thank you. Uh, and who from the city? Would that be Solicitor Grover?
That would be me, Madam Chair. Um, we are, Pat proposed this ordinance because the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania passed a law and said, you shall adopt this ordinance. Um, so, uh, and what it does is it simply is a notice, uh, that's in addition to what's currently available, um, that an applicant who bought a property sometime in, in the middle of the year can file an application under a form now provided by D C E D for a waiver of penalty and interest because they never got the original notice about when taxes were due. So it's sort of a one-time thing you have to be eligible for. I frankly have no idea what problem they're trying to solve. Um, other than they mandated that municipalities adopt this additional piece under the local tax enabling act. Um, but basically the treasurer has to make that notice available. And if they certify that they bought the property within the twelve months, they didn't get the notice, the penalties and interest are waived for that first year. But when they file the notice, they have to pay the taxes in full. So they can't not pay their taxes and then get a waiver. You know, they have to, they have to do those things.
Alright, thank you. Uh, I'll open it to my colleagues for any questions. I'll start to my right with Councilwoman Rawls.
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bowers.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Majors.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels?
Um, frankly, I don't know. I can find out for you, but, uh, well, we do, um, no, that's for a transfer. So I don't, I don't know. I don't, I frankly don't know how they're gonna get it.
So this is, what are the
There's, I think, it, it's, it goes up for, I think, a total of ten percent or twelve percent. I forget what the number is. But then it re- it reverts after you miss a year of taxes, it reverts to the county to take care of and collect after twelve months, you know, the following January. So this for those people who bought it during the year and didn't, weren't, didn't own it in January, didn't get whatever notice came out. That, you know, if you don't pay by a certain date, there's penalty and interest. I, I can't really fathom the real estate closings here where the taxes aren't paid. So something, yeah, it, it's, it's gotta be some, I, I don't know who the lobbyist for this particular changes, uh. Right.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez.
Uh, no questions for me. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. I don't have any questions myself. Um, I'm going to, uh, recommend that this is added to our next legislative agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Green. Uh, the final committee that you will hear from this evening is the Public Safety Committee. I will defer to our Public Safety Committee Chair, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, beginning with the Public Safety Committee business, uh, we will be discussing Resolution seventy-seven of twenty-twenty-two and also Resolution eighty of twenty-twenty-two. Mister Parker, would you mind reading Resolution seventy-seven of twenty-twenty-two into the record, please?
Yes. Resolution seventy-seven dash twenty-twenty-two. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a license and service agreement with the United Public Safety Incorporated to provide parking enforcement and management hardware and software to the City of Harrisburg, including handheld citation devices, the use of an online citation payment portal, digital storage, processing, and related services, and further authorizing the imposition of third-party user fees for violators.
Thank you for that. I see we have Commissioner Carter and Deputy, um, with us this evening, who would be speaking on behalf of the resolutions. D C?
Uh, good evening.
Good evening. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thank you for having us. This was the U P safety one, right? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, what I did was I took, uh, just a little bit of time today, put together just a little briefing for you, just to answer maybe some of the questions. Uh, if it's okay with you, I'll just read through there quickly. And if, if there's more questions, you can just ask them. Uh, so the Bureau of Police utilized Clancy Systems to write electronic parking tickets, uh, in the past. Uh, they began looking for alternatives to Clancy in twenty eighteen. If you're deciding on U P safety, it's an exit electronic parking enforcement system in December of twenty nineteen. The change to U P safety was paid for by a JAG grant secured from Dauphin County. Would not take effect until the Clancy contract expired. That would be in September of twenty twenty-one. The Bureau switched back with writing manual tickets when U P safety implementation could not begin due to post-pregnant, post-pandemic issues. Contract had to be renewed due to the time elapsed since inception and a contract will be for three years. Grant is still gonna pay for that contract. This contract will cover twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and twenty twenty-five. Bureau of Police is looking to switch to, well, we're looking to switch to Tyler after this. Uh, it would not be cost-effective for the Bureau to switch over and forfeit the twenty-five thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars in grant money. Just, we, we did look at Tyler, uh, what I'm thinking is that in, when they looked to switch, Tyler was not on the table for the city. Uh, so we did look at Tyler after they had, they had to come up. And for the twenty twenty-two cost, it would have been, at least the equipment would have been thirty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars. And then with an annual cost of sixteen thousand eleven dollars, or I think it was four or five years thereafter. But they wanted to, if, if the city wanted to purchase outright the equipment or the parking enforcement officers, it would have been forty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy dollars with annual cost of eight thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. So you, the rest of the stuff in there, I can read that if you'd like, or we can just.
Yeah, I can open it up for questions. Um, start with my far right, Councilwoman Rawls.
Well, good evening and Happy New Years again. I don't have any right now. I might go looking through it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Come back to you, absolutely. Uh, Vice President Green?
Thank you. I don't really have many questions. Um, we're kinda looking over it. Uh, this is a contract that that we already like.
There was already contract in place to answer your question.
Yes.
Uh, but it wasn't between the city and U P safety. It was between Dauphin County and U P safety.
Okay.
So we weren't really, uh,
Direct.
Right. It, it didn't involve us. But when we had to, we're like, hey, we're ready to go. We wanna do this and there was meeting after meeting after meeting. Uh, they're like, well, we have this new contract for you to sign. Mister Grover's like, well, if we're gonna sign up for the city, we gotta give it to the city council. So it wasn't gonna be as easy as we thought it was going to be. But the, the county, the bill is already paid. And it just didn't make, well, at least to me. I'm just, I'm a police officer, but it didn't make sense to me to just give you that money. We must have just paid for it. We already got the equipment.
Right.
Already got the training. There's only a couple more things we have to do and it's paid for for now. And it gives the city time to incorporate Tyler. We looked at their parking system. It's not bad, um, but there's still a cost involved. If we can use other people's money to pay for it, I think we should. That's my opinion.
Alright. Well, you kinda answered my questions before I even got to formulate them all the way. So I appreciate that. That, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, President Bowers?
Thank you for clarifying, uh, the relationship with the county and then the city. So this contract will cover two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. But my question is with Tyler Technologies, with the new migration that's in place, um, will this be compatible with Tyler or there's no comparison between the two?
Uh, in reference to the comparison of the two systems?
I guess so.
I think it's not compatible.
It's not at all. This is completely separate.
There, there's discussion about whether we need additional devices in Treasury, which I've gotten a hundred and eighty-degree answers on. Like, we actually do, we actually don't, to make the payments. We're talking, so what it did was we have possession and it's chained on the handheld devices that the parking enforcement officers go out and put the license plate. Uh, what Mister Grover's referencing is there is already a credit card machine in Treasury. So if, uh, Mister Carter got a parking ticket, he can go over to Treasury, he can pay cash or whatever, but if he says, I wanna pay my credit card, because the proprietary, uh, contract with that credit card machine, we'd have to buy the credit card machine for Treasury. And then, as you can see in there, uh, they'd have to pay an extra dollar, twelve cents to use a credit card in Treasury. And, and there's a waiver we have to secure from our current vendor.
Okay.
Because it's an exclusivity clause, but everyone's aware of that. And Portner and I have talked about that.
Okay.
We think it's gettable, um, but it is mandated under the contract. We get a waiver to use some other system that gets the money instead of them. Um, and, uh, so there are details that still have to be ironed out. The reason that the Law Bureau determined it had to come here was more about, uh, which is at the end of the first page of the resolution. It's the additional processing fee of four percent or three dollars per paid ticket. Um, because that adding additional money instead of, that the, uh, person who got the ticket is paying, council has to approve that that's okay. That, you know, um, we do it already with, for example, S P plus gives you a ticket. If you wanna pay by phone, it's three fifty extra, uh, since, since inception. You know, it's, it's, it's a processing fee. But because it's a fee in addition to the fines that you already approved for parking tickets, it is subject to council approval.
Okay.
That, as if someone would get a ticket and wish to pay for it on like their app or the phone, uh, like a, uh, go to their website and pay it via that.
Alright, well, thank you for clarifying. I just wanted to note the compatibility if any, but thanks for, for clarifying. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilman Majors?
Thank you. And, and just, so for my clarification, again, there's no out-of-pocket cost to the city at this point since the contracts were already negotiated. Were there any additional costs that the city's gonna have to incur for this new contract for?
Yes.
The, the, the transfer to United Public Safety.
On-track costs, no, but, uh, there are other, if you look down in the, after the amount of parking tickets issued. So additional costs that we've already budgeted for for twenty twenty-three include if, uh, let's say that Commissioner Carter got his ticket, but he didn't pay it. If, what it would do is after you didn't pay it for so many days, system, their, U P safety would search the end-up database to prepare a letter for them automatically and would find the last date, the last address listed. So there's no cost if they live in Pennsylvania. If he lived in Maryland, searched that Maryland database and to provide that address, they'd charge us two dollars and fifty cents. That's if they find that, they found out where so they would charge us for that. And to send out the automatic delinquent notices, they would just charge us a dollar. So that would include to generate the letter, put it into an envelope, put a stamp on it, and stick it in the mailbox. And there's a potential storage fee, just depending on the amount of storage these things take up. When you issue a ticket, there's photographs. Um, so that's a question that may have to be negotiated with them. We really didn't get to an answer. Right. So.
Data space, okay. Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels?
Uh, just for clarification, the, the service that we're securing is really just, it is the issuance of the ticket rather than having to do it manually, doing it electronically and then follow up with it.
Yeah, right. If I may, right now we're issuing manual paper parking tickets. Which, so the parking enforcement officer issues a ticket, or a police officer. They go up to the parking enforcement office. They manually enter into an antiquated system. And then, uh, then they can be paid for in Treasury. So they have to do that every day. So it's very, on the backend, it's very inefficient.
So, uh, is there, because one of the issues I have with Treasury as it relates to the parking tickets is there isn't a way, it, it seems like there isn't a communication electronically between what happens with the police and what happens with Treasury. So theoretically, I think the ticket, the ticket says that you can pay online, but you actually can't pay online. Um, so this doesn't address any of that.
I think it would actually improve, if I may, because let's say, uh, uh, I go out and I give a parking ticket to Commissioner Carter. He could, uh, he, he gets a ticket. He's like, oh my gosh, can't, he walks down to Treasury, they don't have that information yet because he can't pay his ticket. Once they put it into this computer, it automatically sends it to the U P safety site. They could go there in twenty minutes and get on their phone, go to that site and pay with a credit card.
These are the same people we used to support?
No, these are new folks. The county had an agreement with them. These are new to us.
Okay, since I guess that's it.
Thank you. Is there, um, are there any further questions from council? Alright, um, with that being said, I move to have Resolution seventy-seven of two thousand twenty-two on our next legisla- lettuce legislative agenda. Um, and we can move forward with Resolution eighty of twenty-twenty-two. Um, thank you. Cause anyway, we can get that a lot. Thank you. Alright, while we're working on that, um, we can move forward to Resolution eighty of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, D C, if you would like to briefly speak. Um, Mr. Parker's working on getting that unlocked.
Okay. Do you want me to just go through my?
I'll read it. Resolution eighty dash twenty-twenty-two. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a domestic animal protective services agreement with the Humane Society of Harrisburg area to provide services to the City of Harrisburg's animal control program.
Thank you for that. Um, DC, did you want to give an overview on that?
Uh, yes, sir, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so we have an annual contract with the Humane Society where, uh, animal control officers, a police officer, or a citizen with authorization from the Bureau, can take an animal out to the Humane Society. And they have a set amount that they charge, uh, per animal. That cost for twenty-twenty-three is unchanged from twenty-twenty-two. Uh, it costs the city, uh, for animal control or a police officer to pick up a, a, a dog, a hundred and twenty-two dollars. If it's a pit bull, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy cents.
That number go up by chance?
No, these are the same for twenty-twenty-two. I, I just double-checked that today. For a pit bull, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy cents. Uh, but there's a hundred pit bull limit. A hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy cents for a cat, and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents for miscellaneous animal, which could be anywhere from a guinea pig to a chicken, um, whatever, whatever it shall be, miscellaneous. Uh, so in just in reference, uh, last year, we budgeted sixty-seven thousand. We didn't receive the contract until December eighth. So we weren't really sure what the budget for the next, for twenty-twenty-three. So we ended up budgeting seventy thousand dollars. Just because we knew it would probably go up, but the, the amounts of animal, the amounts per animal did not go up. Uh, last year, we spent, uh, out of the miscellaneous services contract in four-two-nine-zero-nine-zero, uh, forty-one thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy cents. But those invoices, there's still three invoices, October, November, December, that we're still going through to make sure that the animals we brought are the ones that we, uh, we took. Cause they have the list, we have a list, we compare them, we haven't paid them. But the money's already set aside for that. And, uh, I've already said about what we budgeted for twenty. So if you have any questions.
Um, how often throughout the years have you found the department needed reallocation because of the over, uh, extension of dogs or cats being retrieved?
So what we do is, and this is per the contract, uh, they take what we spent the year before. They divide that in half, and that's the money that we have to put into a purchase order that they can draw from. So the January invoice that we'll receive in February, they'll, we would already have deposited their required payment for twenty-twenty-three in January is twenty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Um, so what they'll do is, and there's also some carryover from twenty-twenty-two, uh, but we had to figure all that out still. But what they do is they'll say, hey, you owe a thousand dollars because the animals were brought out. So they'll take a thousand dollars out of that amount that we've already, uh, put into purchase order. Um, and then when it comes to time, they're like, hey, you have to, I think the contract says you have to keep a thousand, ten thousand dollars. And they will, uh, when, once we get to that, near that limit, they'll say, hey, you need to plus up your purchase order. And so like, right at the end of the year, Jen Cameron plus up fifteen thousand to cover the last three months in case we got close.
Okay.
That answer your questions?
Yeah, absolutely. Um. I have no further questions. I'll open up the floor to my immediate right, uh, Councilwoman Daniels. Uh, Councilmen Majors.
So, let's issue, Humane Society give a reason why the pit bull fee is more than double the original or the, the, the dog cost, or is that just what they, these are, and they give a reason? So the one-twenty-two is the per dog, but per bird, it's two sixty-five. So that's over a hundred percent more than.
Oh, no, that's the, that's the same amount from twenty-twenty-two.
Right. I'm, again, I'm just asking, it, it's just their number. They don't give a reason as to why it's double. It's just their number. Okay. And then how many, and then the next question I have is, do we have a number of how many pit bulls we've, uh, sent to the Humane Society for twenty, calendar year twenty-twenty-two?
Our last count was over a hundred and five. This is the first year we went over a hundred.
Okay.
And yeah, they did send the notice. We couldn't send anymore and more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, President Bowers.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Green.
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you. No questions for me either.
And just for the, um, residents watching, if they had an animal that they needed off of their premises, what would be the best way to go about that?
Well, if it's, if it's their animal, they would have to go out there and turn the animal into the Humane Society if they wanted to do that and pay that.
Okay. Well, if it's a stray.
If it's a stray animal, they could call the police department Monday through Friday, uh, during normal working hours, we can have animal control out there, uh, go out and take that animal out there for them. Or they could call a police officer during after hours. Um, they could give them an animal surrender form. And basically, as a police officer saying, hey, uh, this is, uh, Mr. Carter. This is his address. He has this dog, and he's authorized to take that out on behalf of the city. But they're going to charge the City of Harrisburg to account for that animal. So our job is to make sure that you just didn't want Fido anymore and that it's actually a stray animal.
Right.
So that, they could do it that way also.
Um, can that be executed to the four-one-one system as well? Or would they have to call in correctly?
An officer would have to come out and, and physically look at that animal and fill out the form for them and say, you just gotta go out. If you're able to take the, the animal out to the Humane Society, there's a form. But if not, we would, we could take them out after hours.
All right. Thank you. Um, any further questions from council at this time? We're adhering none. I, uh, move to have Resolution Eighty of twenty-twenty-two, um, put on our next agenda for our legislation session. And that is the ending the work of the Public Safety Committee for Harrisburg City Council. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chair Rodriguez. We will now move to public comment. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. You will have two minutes to share your comments. Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper. If you could please state your name and your address. Uh, if you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. And we will begin. Is there anyone to my right that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle?
Oh, okay. That's on?
Yes.
Hi. My name is, as you guys know, I'm sure know, Brandon Basom. I live on the three thousand block of, uh, Third Street. Um, I'm here because, as you probably also know, another cyclist was killed in our city on, uh, Cameron Street. Uh, in twenty-eighteen, here at First Place, there was a Vision Zero plan, looking to end traffic deaths in the city. Earlier, years ago, we actually took some of the steps, you know, along the road to do that. Recently, I've noticed that not only have we stopped implementing and expanding on the Vision Zero Plan, but in the case of State Street, where we actively have planned, funded, and unanimously, uh, passed by council. Um, unfortunately, there's no safe way through and to Allison Hill, Cameron Street, and everything east of it is incredibly dangerous for pedestrians and cyclists. And I said before that if we don't do anything, if we don't add more infrastructure, we're going to have more deaths. Since my friend Layla died, we had a, uh, young lady who was killed on foot, and now one of the cyclists. And, I mean, this, I think this is unacceptable. Like, it's not just a matter of we should be doing more, or we should be doing what we've already committed to do. We should restart the State Street improvements that were set to be, uh, you know, done, uh, last year, which we were told the whole thing would be resolved quickly, and it's now twenty-twenty-three. So I, I ask that you restart that, that we expand upon safety infrastructure, that we, you know, put the lives of citizens above the, uh, this, the commute time of, uh, people getting in and out of the city as quickly as they think they should be able to. And lastly, I may, kind of sad note, but if anyone's interested, we're going to be holding memorial for, uh, the young lady who was killed, Chantel Worley. It'll be at the site of where her accident was. Um, we ask that you, you know, bring a candle if you do come, the family and the Church of Ashbad. It'll be this Saturday at three o'clock on the, uh, corner of Paxton and Cameron Streets. And I want to just implore you, like, do something so we don't, this doesn't happen so often. This has been so many of us here. Thank you.
Uh, hello, my name is Amber Blalock from the New Fox Ridge neighborhood. I'm also here to talk about State Street. In twenty-eighteen, State Street was the most dangerous street in the nation. That's not an exaggeration. That's statistics. That's a death rate of eighty-eight point sixty-four deaths per one hundred million vehicle miles traveled, which is nearly four times as many as New York City's Boulevard of Death in the nineteen nineties. The year is now twenty-twenty-three, and unfortunately, not much has been done. Once a target of Harrisburg's Vision Zero, State Street has now seen most of the planned and improved improvements rolled back. There will be no road diet, no pedestrian islands, no bus stop cutouts, no protected bike lane, nor any bike lane at all. We will have to make do with signs and paint. And the reason for this is parking in PennDOT. I've heard claims that PennDOT needs State Street as a detour during construction on Interstate eighty-three, eighty-three, and therefore we must prioritize traffic along State Street during the period of this construction, which is to say, over the next seven years. I am not certain why PennDOT didn't think that, think of this back when the changes were approved, as the construction was already planned. But I suppose in twenty-thirty, we can finally consider prioritizing lives over commute times. I personally, however, would rather not wait that long. And there is no need to wait that long because we do not have to sacrifice for safety, not even parking. And yes, I do understand the concerns about parking. The capital region is sadly constructed to force people to rely on cars. The people who must use cars must also have a place to put them, and cars take up a lot of space. So when bike lanes are proposed, people then assert that roadside parking is more important. I have specifically seen people argue how they rarely see cyclists on State Street anyway, as though to dispute the need for a bridge by pointing out how few people swim across the river. There's something of a chicken and egg problem here, where enabling alternatives to car travel, such as encouraging people to bike via the construction of protected bike lanes, might help reduce this car dependency and thus reduce the importance of parking. But honestly, it doesn't even matter because, again, it is perfectly possible to have a safer State Street without sacrificing a single parking space. I'm going to take a moment to talk about lane width. There's an old school of thought amongst road designers, which says that wider lanes are safer. It seems intuitive. Wider lanes keep cars further apart, making collisions less likely and allowing more room for error. And it certainly feels intuitive when driving along roads with wider lanes. Uh, you feel safer, it's less stressful, you don't have to pay as much attention, you can speed up. But of course, inattentiveness and speed are not combinations which tend to increase road safety, which is the factor that the bigger is better line of thinking tends to forget that highway-sized lanes result in highway-sized speeds. On a highway, that's fine. On a seven-lane residential road which runs through a school zone, it is not. And the evidence supports this. City roads with lanes wider than eleven point eight feet are simply statistically much more dangerous than narrower ones. No number of speed limit signs can fix this. People will drive the speed that the road allows. And no signs or paint, paint will complete, compete with simple physics. And yet, signs and paint are exactly the primary safety improvements being considered for State Street. We can do better. If lanes wider than eleven point feet are dangerous, what about narrower ones? Well, we have the statistics on this too. And they show that city streets with lanes between ten and ten and a half feet have the lowest fatality rates. The widest SUVs in the U.S. are about seven feet, a fire truck's about eight feet. State Street's lanes are twelve feet wide. I think we can narrow that some, which means also that if we change nothing but to narrow each of State Street's five travel lanes to ten feet wide each, we add an additional ten feet for bike lanes. If we narrow the parking lanes as well, we're up to fourteen feet, which is plenty of room, I would say, for bikes. If we do nothing else, I would strongly encourage this council to please narrow these lanes and add bike lanes. But we can still do better. And here, I turn to the analysis of renowned city planner Jeff Speck, who has specifically reviewed State Street. His verdict is not only to narrow the lanes, but also to remove some. Granting State Street a generous figure of twelve thousand cars per day, which is more than PennDOT's estimates for actual traffic volume along that street. There is no need for more than three travel lanes to handle the volume of traffic, one each way and a turn lane. Other cities with comparable roads have done it, and they have done it with no slowdown, substantial slowdown in commute times. That's an additional thirty-four feet for pedestrian and cyclist improvements, all without removing a single parking space. This is a solution that can make everyone happy, is a solution that can make everyone safer. I'd like to close with a quote which circles around urbanist spaces. If we can accurately predict the number of deaths a road will produce, and we do nothing to fix the underlying problem, then they are not accidents, but rather planned road deaths. We can do better, and we must do better for the people of Harrisburg. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to offer public comment in the middle section?
Hi, my name is Shane Fox. I live in the fifteen-hundred block of Green Street. And I wanted to thank you all for allowing us to speak and for being here tonight. And I don't have any prepared statement, but just generally would like to support Brandon, that I think it's important that we focus on pedestrians and the, the least able-bodied people, people in wheelchairs, little kids going to school. My daughter, every day, rides her bike down Front Street to St. Stevens. And I, I worry about her. I think that we have, everything is kind of focused toward car drivers and people in cars. And the attitude I see of people coming into the city on Front Street in the morning is, they don't care about us, the people of Harrisburg who live here. We go and they look at us like we're dirt. And I talked yesterday with someone who lives in Camp Hill, and I asked him, I said, because all the kids there, they walk. I said, what would happen if people from Harrisburg went to Camp Hill? And we just zoomed through crosswalks and looked at their kids and just, just been like, what, what do you want? The cops would have us out of the, out, on the ground, beat the shit out of us. There's no way they would tolerate that. But in Harrisburg, for some reason, we just accept that, like, we have Cameron Street and people go through a lot of traffic. PennDOT is forcing more traffic through on that street. We have Front Street, we have commuters coming down Front Street, and I feel like we just accept that, yeah, well, too bad. The people on foot, they're just tough luck. They, they need more money and they need to get cars. And I'd just like to express, right, that we should always keep in mind that the least, people with the least money, the people who are disabled, who can't drive cars, the people who have, are in wheelchairs, the people that walk everywhere or ride their bikes, we need to keep them in mind and try to do whatever we can. And I appreciate that you guys, I think, I, I'm sure that you think you all want to do the same thing. And I, I don't envy you. I know you have a hard job. And I want to thank you for having and listening to us and, and, uh, have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left. Okay, seeing and hearing no one. Before we adjourn tonight, I mentioned at the start of our meeting that I would share, um, the process that Harrisburg City Council will undergo to fill the vacancy left by former Councilman Metzen. We will have an application process. The applications are actually live today, Tuesday, January third, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, in order to fill this vacancy, the applications will be received over a ten-day period. The applications will close on Friday, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Applications are available in the Office of the City Clerk that is located on the third floor of the Martin Luther King Junior City Government Center. Uh, they can also be downloaded on the Harrisburg City Council website. All applications must either be returned to the Office of the City Clerk or a completed PDF must be sent back to our clerk, Mr. Michael Parker at M. Parker at Harrisburg PA dot gov, or our deputy clerk, Mr. Jared Truesdale at J. Truesdale at Harrisburg PA dot gov. Uh, again, the deadline is Friday, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. From there, applicants will be asked to interview with Harrisburg City Council during our work session that will be held on January twenty-fourth, beginning at five-thirty PM. Uh, following the interview, uh, we will make our selection that same night. Um, and a swearing in will be held on Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, which is a scheduled legislative session, beginning at six PM. Um, if you're visiting the. Um, if you're visiting the Harrisburg uh PA dot gov website. Under latest news, there is a uh link where it says apply now to become a member of Harrisburg City Council. The application can be downloaded uh from there. Uh, just one final note, the position will be up for reelection in twenty twenty three, just for your reference. Okay, I don't have anything else, council members. The time is six twenty three P M. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I just had a quick.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. If um, if I could just speak for a quick moment, is that okay? I'm not trying to keep anybody long, I respect everyone's time, but um. As a mother of two children in the Harrisburg School District, and as we are community members. I know that um it is highlighted in a negative way constantly, so I wanted to highlight it in a positive way if I could. Just quickly for members watching and for all of us here. Uh, one, they have a lady Cougar Clubs that is starting this Sunday. Uh, my daughter is a part of it, and they'll be having recreational games. Um, thank you to Coach Ross and Coach Maxwell and Coach Chiz for that. Also, Melrose Elementary has a choir headed by Mister K, who had a wonderful performance. Before he went on Christmas break. Um, and this is the first time they've had a choir within six to ten years, I believe, so it was an excellent accomplishment. They also have a band program in the fourth grade now. Um, which is a great accomplishment as well, which will push being up until high school. Excuse me, um, they've also are this year gonna start a girls' high school soccer club, so they can begin to have a girl's soccer team. At the high school level. Um, they have, and I believe we may be the only school district in the area who has a pre-K counts program. Starting at three years old, so our students can get ready for kindergarten, which is imperative. Um, I've seen that in the classroom when they're not ready, so having that program is everything. And most importantly, I I want to point out the teachers and administrators there. Um, they don't always get highlighted in the most positive way, but they're trying their best. Um, to do what they can for the students there, but I think what they need right now is us as community members and as parents to step back. And look at ourselves and say, are we being the best role models? Are we doing all we can as community members? And are we showing the students that we do see in our community the best way to be citizens here? And if we're parents in this community, are we showing our children the best role models? And are we holding our kids accountable when the school does call and may have a problem with our student? Are we not, are we just saying, hey, no, my child didn't do this? Are we saying, you know what, what can I do now to help out? And I think that we all have to come together and um accept that responsibility and do something. Because they can't just fall in the school district because they can't do it themselves, they're not babysitters. They are paid professionals who are there to help, so now what can we do to help? Thank you for indulging me for.
No, thank you so much. If we don't set positive examples, who will? So thank you, um. And it's so refreshing to hear about all of the activities and uh new sports clubs that are starting. So that's really exciting to keep the students engaged. Anything else before we adjourn, council members? Okay, the time is uh six twenty six P M. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. We stand adjourned.